Call this meeting to order. Notice of a regular meeting of the City Council, December 23rd, 2024 at 5:00 PM. The City Council Chamber is 3947 Lincoln Avenue in Groves, Texas. You'd all rise for the prayer and pledge, please. Let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for all your many blessings, Lord God. Most of all, we thank you for sending down Christ to die for our sins. Lord God, we just ask that you help us to remember the reason for the season, Lord God, and help us not to just cornerhole just this couple of, just this one week during the year, Lord God, but help us to remember Christ all year long. We ask that you send down your Holy Spirit to give us guidance, Lord God, be with the council, and help them to make the decisions that you want them to make. Lord God, fill them with your Spirit, give them wisdom and knowledge to make those decisions. We ask this in Christ's name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Item four, roll call, City Clerk.
Mayor Born.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim McAdams. Councilmember Dugus.
Here.
Councilmember Oliver.
Here.
Councilmember Canitas.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item number six, big reports, City and staff.
Mayor and Council have a couple things. First of all, this is a reminder or clarification for folks that pay online to the city. The city is like any other business that accepts payments online. We use a third-party vendor to accept payments. And when you hit the pay button, if you hit refresh, you hit the button multiple times, you're gonna end up getting charged multiple times. We have the ability to reverse those charges, but that's not instantaneous. We cannot reverse a charge until it hits our account. So if, for whatever reason, you accidentally hit a button multiple times and submit multiple payments to the city, all you have to do is call, and we will do that, but that charge has to hit our account first, and you have to call. And it usually, it takes just a short period of time for that to hit our account, but if you look at your agreement with the bank, your agreement with your credit card, you will see that there is gonna be language in there that credits and debits to your account can take up to five to seven to 10 days to clear your account. So normally, it does happen just very quickly, a matter of hours, but it can take time. We can't reverse money, take, send money back to you if we don't have it in our account yet. So if you accidentally hit the button multiple times to pay us, we will give the money back to you, just have to wait for the money to get to us first. Second thing is, Marshal Robin would like to give us an update on Blue Santa.
Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity, just to take a brief moment of your time. I'd like to try to keep you all abreast of the things that our Groves, Texas Police Officers Nonprofit Corporation is involved with, at least a couple of updates throughout the year, one being nationally now, but today specifically our Blue Santa program. Our 2024 Blue Santa program brought holiday cheer to 13 households and just under 50 children. The event is made possible through the collaboration of our schools, local schools, volunteers, and several different community organizations. Just to give you a quick reminder or overview of how the program functions, we work with PNG ISD and with several local advocates who needed help find, locate, locate or find families that are in need, and we ensure that gifts are given to those families, specifically the children, during the holidays season. On December 10th, student groups helped us shop for those families after they completed some lists, and we use the Walmart here in Port Arthur off of Twin City. And then on December 14th, we actually had a date where we wrapped, individually wrapped every single one of those gifts, labeled them for each and every individual child, and we packaged those in our nonprofit box trailer for the delivery. And this year, on December 17th, with approximately 10 to 20 volunteers, around 15, as well as the assistance of officers, we had a game warden in their airboat. Blue Santa got to sit in the airboat this year. And then volunteers, a hay bale trailer, we went to each one of those houses and with Santa's helpers delivered those gifts to those families and to those kids. The volunteers have played a major, major role. Dance Works, PNG High School's Key Club, Criminal Justice, and National Owners Society Groups, we are so very thankful for their support. We could not have gotten half the work done, probably more than that, without their assistance. So we're very appreciative of them, and also a huge thank you to all of our sponsors that offer support, generosity, and of course finances to make this all possible. We did make a post on our nonprofit page on Facebook, Groves, Texas Police Officer Nonprofit Corporation. So for any additional information or photographs, they're listed there.
Thank you. Any other reports? This time, we'd like to take a moment to recognize a couple individuals for their service to our community. In appreciation of your dedicated service to the citizens of Groves, we'd like to thank Councilmember Rhonda Dugus for her service from the years of 2020 to 2024. Thank you, Rhonda. Also, I'd like to thank and appreciate your dedicated service to the citizens of Groves, Councilmember Paul Oliver, from 2020 to 2024. I'd also like to welcome Mayor Pro Tim McAdams to the meeting.
Sorry, Christmas traffic's killing.
Item seven, do we have any citizen comments?
I'd like to speak, please.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
My name is Catherine White. My address is 2321 Nottingham Lane.
Ma'am?
My concern is I'd like someone to explain to me the process on the outrageous water bills that we've been receiving.
So under citizen comments, we can't have a back and forth, it's not an agenda item. You're more than welcome to email the City Manager and ask any specific questions so that we can address that, and he can point you in the right direction for all the information you need. Or call Ms. Clarissa. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments?
Rhonda Dugus, 6079 Smith Street. First, I will say it's been a pleasure working with Mr. Carruth, and to the city employees, you're welcome. I've provided for two years relief from the heavy health insurance fees you would have had to pay. None of you came and thanked me for that, so you're welcome. I am the whistleblower of Groves. I will continue to whistleblow on the corrupt criminal fascist Born and his criminal mafia. I am also a citizen journalist, and I'm your worst nightmare. I know your dirty little secrets, Born. I've had complaint after complaint about you and your mafia gang. You shred the Constitution of the First Amendment rights, and the people of this city don't care enough to stop you. You shred and violate the Open Meeting Act, and you destroy the fabric of this city and the community with your good old boy ghouls. You have sat in that seat and blown up our city with your consolidation of power to control every, and I mean every, organization in this city. You said you would burn our city down, and you have. Money laundering, kickbacks, money missing from the city. Where's the $300,000 that could have been used for the forensic audit I demanded in 2022? And remember, you're the one that asked if your business would be audited. You covered up those financial crimes in this city, and you had help. Chris Born and his criminal entrapment scheme against me continued with a con run against this city during the fraudulent election of Ward Four. You and your criminal corrupt entrapment schemers, Baden, Leitha Canouse, Ray Gay, who's your special girl, and talked to the press about it. Criminals, Katie's Gibb, Canitas, McAdams.
Welcome to politics.
Shut up! You don't get to talk now. This isn't your time, Petey.
That's what you're talking about.
No, no, you don't get to talk now.
Ma'am, I'll let you say all the dirty things you want about me, but please keep your, please keep it to me.
Uh-uh. You paraded your political paramours in front of the City Council to try to degrade me, marginalize me, destroy my reputation, cast doubt on my character and integrity, while your little Leroy was threatening my life at City Council and my work, and the eunuchs of City Council sat here with a closed mouth, and you smiled and let him do it. You organized and sent every single person and gang that came to City Council meetings to try to destroy me, spewing their hatred and malice against me while you, the real corrupt culprit, was lauded as a king. I know how corrupt you are, Born, and the entire city will know about your criminal activity. You wanna stop the Mexican cartel gangs? Born's to blame. You wanna stop the ID thefts that prey on people's funds and steal their SIM cards? Born is to blame. You wanna stop the motorcycle gangs that terrorize the elderly of Groves and scare them out of this city? Born is to blame. The crime list goes on and on, citizens of Groves that are scared of the police and Born, but I'm not scared of your corrupt fascist criminal self. When I leave this office, I had better not be harassed by anyone receiving a paycheck from the taxpayer of Groves. You and your criminal mafia members had better watch what you do, because I will fight back. The crimes in this city are being covered up by Born, and you are to blame. He controls the police, and I love the police. I've always supported them. Now they answer to Born. My city is in desperation and strangled by your corrupt fascist plan you carried out with the Chamber, Planning and Zoning, EDC, and my position as City Councilwoman. You use the people of this city as stepping stones just to get their vote so you can get what you want, and you violate their constitutional rights. I know it all, Born. I know all of it. You are an evil, evil filth, and if you think you're going to be elected as judge in Burnett's place, I will make sure this county knows about your fascist corrupt criminal activities, and you can kiss that begot goodbye. Your special girl, honey, the whole city knows what you've done. Kiss my ass.
City, citizens have spoken.
Petey.
Shut up, Petey.
Freedom is speech.
Shut up, little Petey.
Hey! Both y'all stop. Any other citizen comments? All right. Item number eight, deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2024 City Council meeting and joint public hearing.
Make a motion, we deliberate an act and approve the minutes of December 2nd, 2024 City Council meeting, joint public hearing.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2024 City Council meeting and joint public hearing. Do I have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim McAdams. Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item nine, be received the minutes of the December 2nd, 2024 Planning and Zoning meeting. Believe everybody has a copy in their packets. Item 10, deliberate an act on ordinance 2024-35 canvassing ballots for the December 14th, 2024 runoff election for wards two and four.
Make a motion, we deliberate an act on ordinance 2024-35. Second.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on ordinance 2024-35 canvassing the ballots for the December 14th, 2024 runoff election for wards two and four. City of Groves, ordinance number 2024-35, and ordinance canvassing returns and declaring results of a runoff election held on the 14th day of December 2024 in the City of Groves. Whereas under and by virtue of ordinance 2024-30 duly passed by the City Council of City of Groves, November 18th, 2024 by ordinance number 2024-30, a runoff election was held in said city on the 14th day of December 2024 for the purpose of electing a council member on Ward Number Two for a two-year term and a council member on Ward Number Four for a two-year term. And it appearing from the tabulation of said election returns that the following candidates for council member in Ward Number Two received a number of votes set opposite their names to wit. Paul Oliver, 231 votes, Brandon Holmes, 382 votes. And it appearing from the tabulation of said election returns that the following candidates for council member in Ward Number Four received a number of votes set opposite their respective names to wit. Ra'Shawn Agay, 538 votes, Kyle Hoyer, 97 votes. Now therefore, it be ordained by the City Council of the City of Groves that said election resulted in the election of Brandon Holmes for council member in Ward Number Two for a two-year term, that said election resulted in the election of Ra'Shawn Agay for council member in Ward Number Four for a two-year term, and therefore Brandon Holmes is hereby declared to be the duly elected council member in Ward Number Two for a two-year term for the City of Groves and shall take the oath of office and assume the duties thereof on December 23rd, 2024, and shall hold his office for a period of two years or until his successor shall have duly qualified. And Ra'Shawn Agay is hereby declared to be the duly elected council member in Ward Number Four for a two-year term for the City of Groves and shall take the oath of office and assume the duties thereof on December 23rd, 2024, and shall hold her office for a period of two years or until her successor shall have duly qualified. Passed, approved, and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of City of Groves held on December 23rd, 2024. Do we have any questions?
Mayor and Council, just to clarify what was read versus what was in the packet. This afternoon, the county did add, or they counted five provisional ballots, and that accounts for the difference versus what was on the spring versus what you read just a minute ago.
Any other questions? No other questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Dugus.
No.
Motion passes.
This was a con run against my city by you, Leitha Canouse, Cindy Baden, all of you.
Ma'am, I would ask you to step down. You and Mr. Oliver have been relieved of your duties. The new council members will take their oath of office instead of these seats. Ma'am, you will watch your mouth.
Oh, I am watching it.
Thank you, Paul.
And let me tell you something. The city knows.
Last time.
She talked to the press about it. She talked to the press. You fool.
Thank you, Paul.
I do appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity for the last four years.
Thank you, Paul.
I didn't know you were white. The crime you committed against me will not go unpunished, and all your criminals, schemers, entrapment criminals, schemers will be punished.
Either take a seat in the audience or leave.
Oh, shut up! Criminal! Shut up! Kiss my ass!
Well, how about we go on to number 11, administering the oath of office to our newly-elected members for council member for Ward Number Two and council member for Ward Number Four. If you would please, both y'all please come to the front. Ms. Clarissa will take your area. I think you can do it together. Or not, one at a time.
Repeat after me, in the name and by the authority. Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
I, Brandon Holmes.
I, Brandon Holmes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Grove City Council, Ward Two.
Of Grove City Council, Ward Two.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, and will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Repeat after me, in the name and by the authority.
In the name and by the authority.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
I, Ra'Shawn Agay.
I, Ra'Shawn Agay.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Grove City Council, Ward Four.
Of Grove City Council, Ward Four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will the best, and will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Welcome. Item number 12, will be deliberate an act on electing a mayor pro tempore for the upcoming year. I will make a motion to elect Councilmember Canitas from Ward Three as the mayor pro tempore for the upcoming year. Have a motion and a second to elect Councilmember Pete Canitas as the mayor pro tempore for the upcoming year. Do I have any questions? Just a little backstory, we pretty much rotate the mayor pro temp to the different councils. Last session was council member Ward Twos, which he deferred to Mark McAdams, so this year would be council member Ward Number Three, which would be Mr. Canitas. We also try to avoid having brand-new people be mayor pro temp, so it actually works out pretty good. So that is the history and where we're at. Any other questions? Do you accept? Do you want to accept?
It's as straightforward as it can be.
Okay. Any other questions? No other questions, vote on the motion. Y'all bear with me, I got new names to pronounce now, so. Mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim McAdams. Councilmember Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations to our new mayor, Pro Tim. And I'm gonna butcher this for a while, so y'all just, again, bear with me. Item 13, deliberate an act on ordinance 2024-33 authorizing a specific use permit for gaming machines and game rooms at 6850 25th Street.
Make a motion, we deliberate an act on ordinance 2024-33.
Second motion. Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on ordinance 2024-33 authorizing a specific use permit for gaming machines and game rooms at 6850 25th Street. Do I have any questions at this time?
Yeah, we had some issues still needing to be corrected at the last meeting.
Everything was resolved, yes, sir. We got everything I needed for them to go forward.
How about the visibility from?
Yes, sir. Everything checks out.
Thank you.
Any concerns from the planning and zoning?
The only thing we were looking at was, we ran the impression that both had to be seen from both 25th and Gilbert, but based on the ordinance, you only have to have sight from one. One on 25th with the machine is higher than the window, so we can't see in, but it has appearance from Gilbert, so it was an option that they maybe made.
Any other questions at this time? No other questions, a vote on the motion. Mayor Pro Tim, or I'm sorry, mayor votes aye. Mayor Pro Tim, Canitas.
Aye.
Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 14, deliberate an act on approval of ordinance 2024-34 amending Chapter Four Alcoholic Beverages, Section 4-6, areas where sale of beer and wine permitted for consumption on premises by including the meets and bounds of 5639th Street for Malagros Tex Mix Grill.
Make a motion, we deliberate an act on approval of ordinance 2024-34.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on approval of ordinance 2024-34 amending Chapter Four Alcoholic Beverages, Section 4-6, areas where sale of beer and wine permitted for consumption on premises by including the meets and bounds of 5639th Street for Malagros Tex Mix Grill. Do I have any questions? Have they, have they already applied for their permitting issue, or is this their first step?
This is the first step. This is the first step is amending the ordinance, so it allows them to make the application.
I have a question. When are they allowed to start serving beer once the permits issued, or?
They're, they're already serving.
That's in, in line with the ordinance?
No. No.
But...
Mr. Mount, can you explain that? Or do you know about that?
Well, so, yeah, the city authorizes the specific location of our ordinance within the city, but there's additionally a permit that's issued by the state. The city's requirement is that both of those be met to serve.
How long does the city have before they can legally enforce?
Well, the ordinance could be enforced before this is passed that permits them that ability in Grove. The ordinance already is on the books that says that they should follow this ordinance.
The state will not do anything until after 180 days.
So they kind of did it a little backwards.
Right, but they made steps, they were making progress, so we chose not to issue citations on the city violation.
Any other questions? No other questions, a vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro temp Canidis.
Aye.
Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 15, hearing deliberate on an update on the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program and Body-Worn Camera Program Grant Applications. This is informational only, so no motion needed. Marshall Robinson, you have the floor.
Mayor, council, I'd like to give you an update on two of the grants that we actually applied for back in January, February 9th of this year. These two grants were through the Office of the Governor of Texas. We use the grants system. One was completed by Chief Deputy Phillips. I completed the other. One of them is for, it was a state competitive for a body-worn camera update or renewal program. The other was through the Regional Planning Commission, and we utilized it to request radios, portable radios for our department. We got some updates approximately two weeks ago to these grants, and this is my opportunity to inform you about those updates. There's also some documentation that's included with your packets, and I've got some pages that I'll reference as we go along. But as you can see, if you've reviewed it, the state of Texas will be fully funding both grants that we have petitioned the state for. The first one being the radios, we're going to be granted $28,137.10. The justification for that request, you can see on page 63 in the packet, it should be the red page label. Oh, my apologies, 61. And that's the last page of one of the bids that we received from Motorola through Bearcom for radios. That was the documentation we used to make this pitch, and as you can see, they are granting it, and that is on page 63. So I got those two pages mixed up. For the body-worn camera grant, and I have to stress this, this is a little confusing when I first pitched it back in January. Typically, when you're going to a company for something like a body-worn camera system, it has many, many different components beyond just the body-worn camera. And the way that this grant was set up is you could petition the state for anything and everything that allowed for the body-worn camera system to function, but you could not include any equipment specifically for a forward or passenger-facing camera system. So it was body-worn cameras only. And I'll get, it's a little bit more specific with utility here in just a moment, but the way that the grant is written and the rate that the grant requirements were specified, this one had a 25% city match, which means when we got with utility after its bidding process, we had to write the grant so that both what we would request from the state and the 25% match that the city would be guaranteed or required to purchase or to add into it would total what the justification of the requests for the body-worn cameras, the components to access the body-worn cameras, the software, the installations in the cars, so that all of those things could communicate. So, once we decided on utility, we got two separate bids, one for communication and body-worn only, the other one, the grand total being everything that we would need. And so that's the differences for the pages for the requests from utility. So, basically, with that said, the state is going to be paying for 58% of the entire request for utility, and that's huge, because that totals about $110,972.54. And that's going to pay for 75% of that being the body-worn cameras, the pieces that you need to make them work, the pieces you need to charge them, the technologies you need to have them uploaded in the system, the software to read it into the system, and vice versa. Or I should say, et cetera, because there's a lot of components with this system. As a body-worn camera system reminder, we did receive quotes from four separate companies. Motorola purchased WatchGuard, which is the system that we originally utilized, and we've had many discussions about Motorola in this building and in many other buildings about how we're having some major issues with their costs. And, long story short, between Motorola, Axon, there's one other that slips my mind in utility, we decided to go with utility, and that's because their equipment, their service, their software, it has some technology that we've never been able to utilize before. It also has software that comes with it that will save us time and effort when it's redacting videos and vice versa. It's going to save some time, it's going to save some money when it comes to how we have to get those things done. Lots of benefits to this system. They also offer additional systems like Lexipol, which actually gives you legal advice and assistance in writing additional grants. We're hoping to turn these two successful grants into continued four-plus grants in 2025, just to give you all that update. With respect to how we negotiated the budget, we knew going with utility was what we wanted to go with regardless of what we were funded by the state. And so we worked with the city manager and the budget process, and of course, council, to set it up a five-year payment plan with utility. Now that the state is going to grant 75% between the state and the match, that portion is going to be paid upfront, and that's why later in the invoice list, you'll see it as we get to that stage of the meeting, the entirety of the $147,000 is listed on page 67. With the way these grants work, through the grants and through the Office of the Governor, you have requirements to meet, you have updates to give, but the sooner you get the process done, the things paid for, that's what gives us the right for the reimbursement. So if you look on page 64, and we have not, we're not planning on paying Motorola just yet or Bearcom for the Motorola radios, there's one restriction on page 64 that we are required to meet, and that is this SWIP review, which is not reflected in the report in front of you. We have already submitted that, we've already been granted approval for that. So that required stage, that post-of-award condition, is actually already fulfilled. Of course, page 65 is our little letter for both grants congratulating on us receiving them. Also, for the body-worn camera, it's got, you know, it's a little bit more complex of a process, so we have a few more conditions that have to be met. And I wanted to kind of give you some background and some additional information on those as well. The first of those four you'll see requires that a city have a, or a department have a policy in place with regards to body-worn cameras. We already have one in place. Now, with the changes that our body-worn camera system, the software, and a few of the ways that the actual hardware is going to be utilized, we'll probably have to make a few adjustments. But the state requires, we already have a policy in place, before we get that reimbursement, we've had a policy in place for years. So that's technically already a box that's checked, we just need to submit that data to the state. Also, we have to receive, you know, to get the information, we have to submit a report to TCO, the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, which obviously regulates how police departments and agencies in the state function. We already submit to them an annual report, so that's also something that is not new. It's something we're used to doing, it's going to be an easy checkbox to check off, and we'll continue on with that. The body-worn camera is the third one, the training, that's something we do anytime we get equipment. It's built in to the five-year program that we have with utility. They're going to come down, they've actually already shipped us the hardware, so we're going to coordinate with them, have a training day set up, we're going to train every single of our personnel that's going to be utilizing this device, and so that'll be a box that we check off probably January, February, hopefully not later than March of 2025. And then the last one, it requires that the police department be the one that's actually administering and providing for this grant. Back in the pitch that I made to council in January, January 29th of this year, it spelled out who the grant writer, who the project director, and who the grant official was, and basically, the party's responsible for these groups, or for these grants, I should say, is myself, my chief deputy, and also the finance director of the city. So those are the three that are going to be ultimately, I'm sure that the conditions are met. There's a few quarterly updates that we have to make with the state on each one of these, but we plan on getting this ball rolling. As I stated, we've kind of already started all of these processes. So I want to make sure y'all are fully aware of where we are, what we need to do so that we can get reimbursed for these funds, and of course, I'm available for any questions that you may have as y'all reference this material.
Thank you. Any questions for the marshal?
So one of the questions I had was about the vehicle cameras. Do we anticipate any of the... Releasing Cruisers with the new program, the Enterprise program?
That is possible, absolutely.
Okay.
We're still working with Enterprise. Obviously, we're early in that process in the pilot program. If they get to a year, let's say, you know, this contract's five years, let's say the third year for some reason, and I'm not going to speculate too much, but they say, hey, look, this one's ready to be swapped out. All the components function. They could be easily removed, placed another one, and then be to replace. The other thing that we got as a service through utility in this specific contract that we signed back in November, of course, as with approval of council and the budget that we passed, anything that becomes defective, we don't have to pay a fee for it because it's wrapped up in our contract. So they send us the components, we install the components, simple as that. As long as we have that active contract with them, service agreement, anything that's new, anything that is replaced, let's say they release a huge update, everything is now new, the software and firmware, major update, we're service agreement partners, we get it for free, we don't have to do any adjusting. Now, once the five years is up, obviously, we have to take a very hard look at what we want to do moving forward, but until then, they're working with us.
Thank you, marshal.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, marshal, appreciate it. Item number 16, deliberate and act to ratify the city manager's execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Texas Department of Public Safety to comply with the Texas statewide inter-local channel plan.
Make a motion, we deliberate and act to ratify the city manager's execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Texas Department of Public Safety to comply with the Texas statewide inter-local channel plan.
A motion and a second to deliberate and act to ratify the city manager's execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Texas Department of Public Safety to comply with the Texas statewide inter-local channel plan. Any questions?
City manager? Mayor, council, the marshal just outlined, in one of the grants, the requirement is that we agree to follow the statewide inter-local channel plan. We already agreed to the former one, this is an updated version. We had to agree to it as part of the grant, and there was a tight deadline to get all the paperwork in, and with the holidays and everything, went ahead and executed it to get it in, so we made certain we didn't miss the deadline. So this is just council coming in behind to ratify what I already did.
Were there any major changes from the previous to this one?
Chris, you want to address that specifically?
No, sir, nothing major. It's along the same lines, we want to continue to get what we hope to adopt in this equipment. We are having to reevaluate some of our plans because of information we get from Motorola, but we're still a work in progress. Of course, if we don't adopt it, then we have to turn the radio grant back.
Any other questions? No other questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro temp Canidis.
Aye.
Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 17, deliberate and act on ordinance 2024-36, amending Chapter Nine and Three Quarter, Emergency Medical Services of the Code of Ordinances.
I make a motion, we deliberate and act on ordinance 2024-36, amending Chapter Nine Thirty Four, Emergency Medical Services of the Code of Ordinances.
A motion and a second to deliberate and act on ordinance 2024-36, amending Chapter Nine and Three Quarter, Emergency Medical Services of the Code of Ordinances. Do I have any questions?
Mayor, council, thank you. To the new councilmembers, congratulations and welcome. Back in, I believe it was January, we placed a moratorium on EMS permits, and that gave the three fire chiefs a chance to take a look at our EMS ordinance and revise it. There hadn't been revised since 2004, so we figured we needed to make some changes. A lot of it is just kind of some, I guess you could say, verbiage to kind of update everything in there. Some of the major bullet points I want to talk about is, in Section Three, the EMS permit, we kind of talked about this, it kind of come up to the national standard on there, raising it for death or injury to one person went from $500,000 to $1 million for their policy, and then damages for bodily injury or death of two or more persons went from $800,000 to $2 million. They talked about this, basically the standard throughout the state and the US.
That's a liability on, that they need to carry.
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's nothing to do with us. And by the way, this is, this is the work of the six fire chiefs from Mid County, the assistants and the fire chiefs from Neeland Port Aces and Groves all got together and did this. They're identical ordinances, the only thing that changes are the names of the cities, of course. We wanted to do that so that we could be, it would be more standardized for any services that run the three cities. In Section Five, under the requirements, it talks about the transportation. We changed some verbiage in there. "In the event of a significant delay by responding ambulance provided by the permitted ambulance provider in other exigent or critical circumstances as permitted by Texas House Bill 642, fire department personnel may use the most appropriate and safest means of transportation to transport critically ill, critically sick, or injured persons." That terminology was not in there before. There is a Texas House bill that says that in extenuating circumstances, a fire department or a police officer could put a patient in a vehicle and transport them to the nearest facility possible. So that just kind of cleans that up a little bit for us. And then, one of the other major changes that we made is all the way down under Section Ten, under liquidated damages. One of the things that we've had, we've kind of seen is, we've had some extended responses, obviously, and it was pretty technical on there, and it was 15 minutes to any priority one call that can be assessed up to $500 per incident. Well, we came together and we created kind of a tiered, I don't know, did you give them the tiered response penalties, Mr. Creve? Y'all didn't get that?
Okay.
If you look at that on the extra page there, priority one calls, 11 minutes to 24 minutes and 59 seconds can be fined up to $500. 25 minutes to 44, 59 is 750, and any response over 45 minutes can be $1,000. So it kind of opened it up for us because we thought that, we have seen a 45-minute response on a priority one call, and a $500 fine is not sufficient for that, so it kind of gives us a little bit more tooth, I guess you could say, to fine them on that. And then, we also saw that there was no, there was not any penalty for a priority two call, which is like... call, which is like basically a non-emergency call. We have had some extended responses on those, and they can be assessed up to $750. I'm sorry, I just realized that, I put up to $1,000, but that is up to $750. 20 minutes to 44, 59 is 500, 45 minutes or longer is $750. So we do have a little bit more on the other calls, too. But those are really the major changes that we have in there. Like I said, everything else in there is just cleaning up of some language and things like that.
Chief, on the damages for the extended response times, how much was, you know, the construction in the area taken into consideration? I know, are they supposed to have a number of available units within our city so that that can be avoided, or are they required to have a number of units on patrol in all three of the cities at the same time?
The only, we don't really have any requirements on that. We do have an agreement with Acadian to dedicate one ambulance to the three mid county cities, and that unit has been staying pretty busy. They do have the ability to appeal a call. Like we have taken into consideration that there were, for one call, we had a, I think it was a 25 to 30 minute response on a priority two call, that five units were just in mid county, and that was within those 30 minutes. So we got, all three cities got slammed. And we have to take into consideration, too, that most people in mid county want to go to Beaumont. They don't want to go to the medical center, unfortunately. On average, a routine call, from the time the call is dispatched to the time that ambulance gets back in service, can be anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half, just because of the travel time and everything. So we do have the ability to kind of work with them on those things, but I have fined them for several priority one calls this year. I don't know that, I think it's been maybe seven or eight calls since July or June, somewhere around there. We had a little, but things have gotten a little bit better over time. But we're hoping that with the hospital being bought out, the medical center, that things will kind of help out. Just a little background, we, Mr. Holmes, I know you're kind of new to the area, when I first started in 1997, there were seven hospitals throughout Jefferson County, Orange County, and Hardin County. Now you have three, so it's tough for them to get around, but we do have the ability to say, hey, look, we need to change some things. They're working with us and it's getting a little bit better, but it's not a perfect system.
Any other questions, Holmes, go ahead.
Who's keeping those stats? Are we getting them from them, or?
When we go with our, when I go to find them, I get the times from our dispatch and send them over to them and look and make sure that they're equal times. And I'd say probably 95% of the time, they're the exact same times, or within like seconds of each other.
Chief, for EMS services, does only the third party provider have ambulance service in mid county, or do we have that at our fire station?
We do not have any ambulances in any of the three mid county cities. Really, the only department in the area that has ambulances in the fire department are Beaumont and Lumberton is about it. Everybody else runs with Acadian and I think City, and I think there's a Legion's over in Orange County.
Have we been able to establish a second unit company to back those, back Acadian in case they run late?
We have, we have not, because we don't have any, we have not been able to permit anybody to run within the city until, nobody can renew, have a permit until December 31st of this year. Right now, they are the only ones that have asked for a permit, so unless they have a permit, they can't run. Thank you.
Any other questions? All the questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro Tim Canitas. Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Out of 18, deliberate an act on resolution 2024-11, approving the recommendation of the Texas Attorney General for the proposed settlement of the opioid claims against the Kroger Corporation and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision participation form.
Make a motion, we deliberate an act on resolution 2024-11.
Second.
A motion and a second to deliberate an act on resolution 2024-11, approving the recommendation of the Texas Attorney General for the proposed settlement of the opioid claims against Kroger Corporation and authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision participation form. No have any questions? Mayor and city manager?
Mayor and council, you recall that, I guess it's been a couple, three years ago, there was a big billion dollars settlement opioid case. But Texas has decided to do is to break that up with the different retailers. We've already agreed to a couple of the previous agreements, this is just the one with Kroger. If we don't agree to it, then we just bypass, give up the settlement terms. So, Mr. Monk, anything to really add to that?
Yes, sir, I would agree with that.
Any other questions? All the questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro Tim Canitas. Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Out of 19, deliberate an act on the December 23rd, 2024 invoice list.
Make a motion, we deliberate an act on the December 23rd, 2024 invoice list.
Second.
A motion and a second to deliberate an act on the December 23rd, 2024 invoice list. On to questions, city manager?
Mayor and council, several items tonight. Bren Tech Southwest for Bren Flock Aid, Sure Systems, $9,830. Chamillion Industries, Holler for the water plant, $34,200. City Bank for P Card for all departments, $9,858.26. Corin Maine, antennas for our water meters, $35,280. Enterprise's vehicle lease payments for two months, $15,298.09. Fuel Man, gas and diesel for the fleet, $13,733.42. LVA for raw water purchase for November, $29,700. PVS, chlorine for the water plant, $6,861.60. TCQ, annual water system fee, $17,485.65. Utility associates, the grant program for the video system the chief marshal was just talking about, $147,890.05. Then bulk and construction materials, 194 tons of base material for the streets, $9,442.41. So grand total, $329,579.48.
Those register antennas, can you explain that, what that is?
The registers, if they don't, if they can't be picked up well with the radio system, they need to add the antennas to it to get better range.
Okay, so that's not part of the battery system?
No, no.
Okay.
And this is for, how many?
This is probably 12 months behind.
How many units?
Oh, Jesus, 12 months, sorry. How many antennas did it give?
1150.
Does every unit have an antenna, or is that for special?
No, they will have an antenna, will work the backyard, backyard's really first in zones because it's close away from the road, and then we're, the whole objective is to be able to take care of a complete zone. Zone three was done already, and majority of that has been taken care of. That's the smallest zone in the city, so then we'll work on others.
We order the antennas and the registers at the same time, so we got the registers first, we did not at the end.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All the questions, we'll vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye. Mayor pro Tim Canitas. Councilmember Holmes.
Aye.
Councilmember Gay.
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Motion passes. Out of 20, councilmember Collins.
I believe I would like to welcome Ms. Holmes and Ms. Gay aboard.
Thank you, sir. I concur. Thanks very much, look forward to working with the team.
Also, ditto to what he just said, welcome. Congratulations on y'all's election. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
I'd like to apologize to everyone for the filthy language that was used earlier, especially those items that were pointed at me, but we will move on and we will work with our new council members, and we'll push forward. So thank y'all for doing your civic duty and voting to improve this city. Thank y'all.
I just want to say thank you for putting us trust in me.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to serve, you know, our citizens. It's going to be a learning curve, but I'm not afraid to do a little bit of work, and I know we have a great community. I want to see it continue to be great, and thank you so very much.
Okay, Merry Christmas, Tom. We will adjourn this meeting at 6:03. Thank you.